Where's that going at?
It's here. Why not?
All right, I guess we're ready to get started. Assuming I sent the city council member all of the budgets by email. If you have that and want to pull that up, that's fine. I did will be on the screen as we go through everything. Discuss the fiscal year 25 budgets. So we'll start out like we always do. Talk about the city's values, which actually generate where most of the money is going to be spent. Is how we determine our values. And of course, our proposed budget meets our city values. Our financial responsibility is reflected in the proposed budget. It's in the balancing estimated revenues, equalling or exceeding expenditures and expenses. Safety obviously continues to be of the highest responsibility as reflected in the budget expenses at sixty-three percent of the overall budget. That of course is the highest of all our expenses. Secondly, city employees welfare. We do have incorporated in this budget a two-step increase. One will be in October of 2024 in the first payroll. And then we have in the budget another step increase, the first payroll of April of 2025. And we will talk about that a little bit more in detail a little bit later. And how that has had an impact on scheduling our budget for this upcoming year. So we're taking a look at the combined budgets for all funds to start off with. Please keep in mind that as we go through these first few slides, that there will be additional slides further into the presentation that will cover more in detail the highlights of the budget changes more specifically. So taking a look at it real quick, this gives you an idea as comparison of how we have determined our preliminary budget overall versus the original preliminary budget that we had for last year. So take a quick glance real quick. You can kind of see where we have the most increases in our revenue and the most increases, you know, from year over year as far as where we're at. And then at the bottom, you can kind of see it's kind of relatively flat, if you would, based on thirty-six million. You know, an increase in revenue of roughly three hundred thousand is pretty flat indeed. Have some ups, have some downs, and that's kind of where we ended up. And we're to take a look at our expenditures. And as you can tell, you know, when I was a kid growing up, we used to always want to go to our Aunt Hilda in Stone Mountain, Georgia. We loved going up there. My parents thought that we loved going to Stone Mountain because of the activities that were there to do. But it actually wasn't because she let us eat dessert first. And as you can see, you can kind of take a look at it from kind of putting the dessert out there first. You can see that our revenue is at thirty-six, one ninety-eight, three seventy-three, and our expenses at thirty-six, one ninety-eight, three seventy-three. Gives us a balanced budget, which is our goal to go into any budget scenario. Let's get into the details here. Take a look at it and see where we're at. How we came up with all these numbers to make it equivalent, that thirty-six million dollars that we've been looking at. So and of course, our general fund, which consists of Fund One and Fund Ten. This is the preliminary budget for the revenues. You can see as in where we're hanging our hats as far as where all of our revenue is going to come from this next year. We'll get into more specific details on where these numbers come from. But you can see that we have projected an increase in overall revenue from our preliminary budget last year by four point five percent, which is eight hundred nineteen thousand, four twenty-five. And you can see the majority of that, all of that just about is from taxes. So in chart form, that's what it looks like. Seventy-one percent of our revenue comes from taxes. The sales taxes is the main majority carrier where it comes from. See where it breaks down, the smaller pie charts, where the other comes from. So general fund tax revenue. So the legislative act 2015, four forty-eight from Alabama's simplified sales and use tax eligible seller report permit a flat eight percent on sales, which is included in this sales tax, sales and use tax number. So when you order your Amazon gifts today and tomorrow from Prime Day, eight percent of that comes back to the city when it's delivered to inside the city limits. That is important. And overall, you can see we have an increase in revenue by seven percent. We also have an increase in out-of-home cash and blue shows an increase. We have a very productive year in out-of-home tax. I know Mr. Gertman sitting over there, he rather enjoys that also. And we have benefited from it too, because that comes through the county, comes through us, and goes straight to the City Board of Education for there to spend on school expenses. The one that's quite puzzling, and has been for a couple of years, is the local fuel tax. We've been kind of staggering around, you know, a little bit more than a million, a little bit less than a million. So this year, we have reduced what we're anticipating in our revenue from the fuel tax down to a billion dollars. So we, you know, we kind of are damn this year and haven't for the last couple of years. So we may have made that adjustment in budgets showing up, our reduction there of one hundred and nine forty. But every other category pretty much remains, remains flat. But overall, you can see a seven percent increase in those taxes. So then we have the charges for services, which is our other, another revenue generator. Garbage collection fees, we kept it flat, one point five, three five. Not much change in any of those departments that we've been able to continue to do very well. We've pretty much figured out, you know, leisure services as far as the municipal pool. We're keeping it very flat. We believe that it doesn't power each a level of consistency that we can, you know, pretty much understand, you know, how, what we're going to do there on a year-to-year basis. But like I said, the down heavy late is the pickup there. They've had a good year. Our airports, we kept it, the budget's pretty much flat as far as the leases and the fuel generated. But what we started to find out here recently, and Denise can share if she wants to, that our corporate jet is going to be using a lot more fuel. And so we are now anticipating that that should be a reachable number at three eighty-nine. Which we're going to fall well short this year and won't be projected overall in airport fuel. So then licenses and permits, here's where we're at on those fees that are being generated. Our business license has had an outstanding year. And so therefore, we've adjusted showing a significant increase in business license, one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars more than what we budgeted last year. And so that is a absolute positive of things going on in the town. Not only that, but individuals collecting those business license fees, making sure that, you know, we, we have licenses for those that we are doing business with. And so we certainly think that that six hundred thousand is an absolute reachable goal this year.
Chris, what else besides that would account for a hundred thousand dollar increase?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What, I mean, what would, what else would account for a hundred and forty thousand in business licenses? I mean,
Yeah, that's it. It's just straight up business license.
At like five hundred dollars a pop?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, they're based on your revenue.
Well, I mean, it's, it's the, yeah, the gross receipts also from the business license. Because, you know, every business, they just pay a fee. They pay a fee based on their sales.
Yeah, the more you sell.
More sales generated.
Do we know what our average licensing is?
Oh, gosh.
They're all over.
Okay.
They're all, it's all over the place, yes. Yeah, we've been, you know, that's been a really bell ringer this year as far as collections and that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chris, let me point out one thing. See that on Southeast Gas receipts? The reason you're seeing that increase, we get funded two ways from Southeast Gas. One is on the amount of gas used in the city of Ozark. There's a formula that kicks it back to us. But there's also another business that we run within the Southeast Gas that's called Southeast Energy Authority. And that is basically where we're buying and reselling gas all over the United States. And that's grown to such a large business now. And that, that money that's given back to us through that part is equally split among the fourteen cities that operate and own Southeast Gas. So you're going to see that number continue to increase because we're doing deals with all the major investment companies all over the United States. And I look for that to really increase over the next few years. I just want to point that out because it's not just the sale of gas on a monthly basis.
All right, our other financing sources showing a negative there, three ninety-five. Most of it's relatively flat. We didn't do much of an increase. Our municipal court collection still kind of declined continuously. So we're looking at a negative beginning this year. So we reduced the budget from municipal court, one hundred and ninety thousand. The big ones, three hundred and eighty thousand. I'll explain that to you real quick. Quite simply, it's the ARCA funds. So we don't really have anything in the ARCA scheduled to be paid in next year's fiscal year timeframe. Matter of fact, my hope is, is that we are completely out of the ARCA money by September thirtieth of this year. So once we get everything finalized there, we might have some of that carryover. But I know we really need to have all of it spent in eleven December the thirty-first. But if I can get cleaned up and completely spent, which does seem to be a problem down here. People like spending money. We'll get that finalized and out here in this fiscal year so that, so that when Ms. Mary Knesset comes back around, this should hopefully be the last year that we have a single audit into federal. Okay, so then we move on to the expenditures. And you can see this is the general fund. We kind of have to combine some departments together in order to try and get it all on one spreadsheet. As you can take a look at general fund expenses. Also that our revenue has increased by four point five percent. All the department heads work really hard on trying to keep their expenses in check for this budget. The budget increase, of course, is two-step increases, which I did a calculation based on everybody's salaries. Everybody thinks, oh, you know, two-step increases really isn't that much. Well, when you take into account not only the salaries, but you have to take into account social security, you have to take into account flight data, you have to take into account retirement, you have to take into account everything. Even overtime actually has a very strong one too, because once those salaries go up, so does that for the pilots. And so the calculation that I took a look at was, well, I just looked at, all right, when I calculated all of the penny increases for both step increases for next fiscal year and then took a look at what we budgeted this past year and did a comparison, it's going to cost us eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for those two-step increases. That's a significant, significant increase and does take up, you know, a lot of budget when you're having to pay out, you know, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. We'll also take a look at capital outlay later in the presentation. And then other finances uses is made up of debt service and our transfer to other funds for the gas tax that goes into Fund Two. And then we have a decrease in debt service, which is my main goal. Of course, it's trying to keep us out of having to go to the market, especially with rates what they are, trying to keep that debt going down each and every year. So as you can see, you know, four point five percent increase year over year as far as our budget for expenditures. So it increases in transfer to debt services from the reduction in debt. Like I said, anytime we can get that to the debt service, you know, going in the south instead of north, that's a win in my book. The only debts that we have outstanding right now, not including the general obligation warrants. We got some police vehicles that have some debt that we borrowed on it, and then the airport team members. There are a couple of leases that we have in this budget. Those are the only two bank debts that we have at this current time. And so we also see our transfer of the street fund that I mentioned. That is the collections that we get from the gas tax that goes into the street fund. And like I said, we've been, we just wanted to see our local gas tax numbers for our revenue being generated. So therefore, a little bit less, we can transfer over into, to seven hundred and five thousand. And you can see the pie charts.
Everybody love pie charts, good pie charts.
Administration's bar presentation, you can see that sixty-three percent. And if you actually consider the debt service that was just mentioned as far as expenditures, it's a little bit greater than that because of the debt associated with police vehicles. But it goes in public safety. Public safety is made up of police, fire, street, sanitation, engineering inspection, vehicle maintenance, judicial, and IT departments. So those are a lot of departments also. And you can see the breakout of the other departments there as far as how it, they, they, they still pie charts. All right, so then we're taking a look at the, our balance. So we begin as far as we have revenues, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Oh, excuse me. Eighteen million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, fifty dollars. How about that? And so taking a look at that, that's revenues minus the expenditures are the same. Gives us a budget of zero, which is where we're at. And of course, this, the estimated beginning fund balance is just kind of based on where we're at right now. Wrapped up our, you know, our annual audit. And so we're around eight billion, one seventy. And so that would currently where we're at as far as, you know, ending fund balance. If, you know, nothing else changed, we didn't lose any money, we didn't make any money. That's kind of where we would be. Essentially, that's where you want to be on budgets is as you grow balance. So the non-spendable restricted fund balance, that's the, a little bit untouchable, I guess, if you would. The two hundred and seven thousand is made up of the utilities board. It's not money that's put into cash yet. So they pay us on a monthly basis, probably quarterly basis, I think they let them get it. Anyway, throughout the year, they do pay us a little bit for being housed in the same building. And so that's currently their balance, around two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and eight at the end of the fiscal year. So, like I said, restricted fund balances are constrained by external parties, constitutional provisions, or enabling legislation, it's money that's capable of touch. You have to keep it out there, that has to be spent for other services. But that gives you count of where we're at as far as a fund balance. Okay, then we'll move on to the special revenues. Special revenues is anything other than our general fund. And so this is accumulation of all of the special revenue funds for the budget of this next year. It combines all of the, everything the general fund, including the shopping center and the EMS. This is where larger grants come into play, especially in Fund Twenty-Five, which is our capital project fund. And then as grants come into play, then we add it throughout the year. So then the expenditures for the special funds. The slide has the revenue side. It combines all the funds except Fund One, Fund Ten. The administration expense are paid through the municipal court, which is our Fund Twelve. Those are quite expensive. You know, I mentioned earlier that our municipal courts might be a little slack and have to reduce the amount of revenue being generated. Well, the expenditures of the municipal court also decrease because you have comptroller, you have state circuit, you have county. Those are all paid out of Fund Twelve. And then our police and fire department, that's our justice grant Fund Seventeen. Then you have our street, seven cent, four cent, our ten cent gas funds. Those are Fund Two, Three, and Twenty-Three, we'll be looking for those here in a minute. And then we have judicial municipal court admin fund, we have corrections fund. Of course, I mentioned earlier, I have a little run tax, which is our Fund Five. Capital outlay, Fund Twenty-Five, our debt service fund is Fund Twenty-Four. So a lot that goes into our special funds, a lot of different funds that we, that we run through on a yearly basis. So let's take a look at our, a few of the special funds that I was talking about. Kind of see where those numbers are generating into the overall special revenue. Fund Two, this is our gas tax fund. This is the fund that actually, that we use to pay our streets with on an annual basis. And we see relatively flat, one hundred and ten thousand revenue. So we have five in financing sources. And so estimated fund balance at the end of the year, four hundred and forty-eight thousand. And the, where that comes from, of course, the city receives gas tax both from the state and the county. So the portion from the state has been estimated at fifty-six thousand. And then the portion from Dale County is estimated at fifty-four thousand, which is where we get one hundred and ten. And then the other financing sources is the amount that we collect from the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, from the gas sales that needs to move to this fund in revenue. And then there's the expenses. You can see generally that the bulk of it is two things. Our contracted street repair versus our paving project that we do year in, year out. And then of course, other financing uses, which is one to be the amount of money that we have to collect out of Fund Two in order to pay debt service on the GEO on twenty sixteen. So that's the amount that we have to correct in order to pay that this upcoming year. All right, fourth thing, another gas tax that we take advantage of, also used for street repair. Projected decrease based on trends so far for this current fiscal year, about sixty-nine hundred. So relatively, you know, not moving the needle a whole lot, but we're glad to see the increases. And then of course, the expenditures that got set up for these streets repair and maintenance that monitor. And then our distributed fund balances. So Fund Ten, I mean, excuse me, Fund Twenty-Three, our ten cent gas tax fund. This is the latest gas tax that was set up by Governor Ivey, the Rebuilding Alabama Act HD Two, twenty nineteen. Also to be used in construction, reconstruction, maintenance, and repair of public roads, highways, and bridges in the state. And so you can see, since they've incorporated that, we've actually seen a relatively, you know, moderate increase every year in the ten cent gas tax move. And so once again, this year, we have about a ten thousand dollar increase as far as overall estate. And then the expenditures also, you know, kind of posing out a little bit, any contract street repair or street repair maintenance that needs to be done throughout the year. And so we'll keep them closed. All right, so I mentioned, so Tom already, debt service fund. Debt service, we have to use our taxes and anything that's available in order to put those together. Because we got to make sure our GEO bonds and the bad notes and our leases, obviously, we want to make sure that those are paid when they come due, possibly even before they come due. Everybody knows that you make a payment ahead of time, they say, you one day in interest that the bank or bond company doesn't yet collect. So a lot of people say, oh, my payment's not due until the tenth of the month, I'll pay it on the tenth. But if you pay it on the first, that's maybe about nine days worth of interest. So just keep that in mind. Back from banking days. All right, and so here is the breakdown where we came up with that. There's no new debt added, of course. Like I said, I mentioned we got a tin hanger, long road commercial ninety, about thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. Should pay off in October of twenty thirty-eight. Police vehicles that I mentioned, balance of about fifty-one thousand in it, and should pay off in January of twenty twenty-five. So that's the total installments as far as outstanding, about one hundred and thirty-five thousand there. And we also, I'll show it in the slide a little bit later, but we had two lease agreements that we had in this budget, one for the street and one for the sanitation. All right, so also talking about the bonds. Here is the breakdown for each one of the bonds that we have. This is the twenty twenty-one, formerly the twenty fourteen, some of which just refinanced on a little while ago, a couple of years ago. And you can see the payments that are associated with that in the upcoming years. And it's set to pay off in March twenty thirty-four. This is the twenty sixteen that I mentioned. This was used to repay a numerous, number of streets at times. See the balance dip, principal and interest that's been paid year in, year out. And that one is expected to pay off in April of twenty thirty-one. Then we have the Sirius twenty seventeen, which was originally twenty eleven. This one really signed it out, there's only three lines there, that means it's really close. And so we should have that paid off in February of twenty twenty-six. You know, there's one, it doesn't seem to pay. So then you combine all of them together, you have to look at it, you can have a hard throw at. On September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, we'll have about five point six, almost five point seven million dollars in outstanding bonds. And so we're going to get that paid off real quick. I did scare the, go ahead.
You go back one.
Yeah. So I did hear our bond representative, Ray G. Bunnick. Mayor and I were talking one day, and we were kind of debating, and he's like, well, can we actually pay the bonds off early? You know, I mean, is that possible? And so when I emailed Sharif, I asked her, I said, I said, so can we pay off our bonds early? And she said, yeah, sure, just tell me which one. I said, well, all three of them. And she said, no, 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 don't pay off all three of them. Who's that big of a portfolio? But technically, we can pay off all three, except for the one that we just re-geared. They all can be paid off early, except for the twenty twenty-one. That one cannot be paid off early. I think it was twenty, let's see, it was, yeah, twenty thirty. I think two thousand thirty-one was when it can be paid off, you know, early without the potential to do anything like that. But all the other bonds can be paid off.
We have like twenty seventeen and save forty thousand dollars.
Do I?
But we could pay like twenty, we could pay off that one and save forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, absolutely.
The only thing about doing that, and Chris don't like to hear this, at some point, we're going to be forced for doing something like sports complex. So we can either continue to pay this at two point something interest, or we can borrow a big pile of money at separate percent interest. So in some ways, we're better off to pay this and take our money and put it towards a sports complex. Does that make sense?
Yes.
The only part that I agree with is the fact that it's a little bit.
Chris, while we're talking about the huge bonds, the half cent we're giving to the school, now that one will pay out in twenty seventeen, right?
That is correct. Okay, so then everybody's favorite, capital outlay equipment and improvement products. So as usual, I went to all the department heads and I asked them to provide me a list of all of the capital outlay purchases that they would like to have for this upcoming year. And thank you for so kind as to provide a lot to me. So, but first of all, this, I mentioned earlier, this is the financing projects that are impacting the budget. It exists by three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars there that we will have. have for this upcoming budget year, that's available for us to fund those items. All right, so then, I still mentioned the capital outlay request, so not everybody got everything they asked for this year, not everybody lost everything that they asked for this year, so we tried to spread it amongst everybody based on what we had available. And you can see that we are having incorporated in the budgets four new police vehicles without borrowing, at two hundred and eight thousand dollars. The cameras and takers, that's a, that's an evil thing I thought, so that hundred and sixty-eight thousand is for cameras and takers. That is a multi-year project, but what comes with the benefits of that, I thought was really neat, if y'all were interested, I'm sure. Deputy Chief can inform y'all then on that, if anybody wants to inquire on that. We do have also fifty thousand dollars for a new vehicle and fire department, turnout here, very important, hundred and thirty-five thousand new street department, a new truck, thirty-three thousand, and then a mulcher attachment, and so that was a definite necessity according to Ryan, and so definitely have to have one of those to assist them in keeping the roadways clear, so. In the sanitation, we've got a water purchase there, a loader, two hundred and fifty thousand, and then EMS, we have the remount of two ambulance box trucks, hundred and fifty thousand there, so that's a total of one million fourteen thousand, and then our orphan recreation, sixty-three thousand total.
You said loader, what kind of loader?
I'm a loading loader.
Not a crash worker.
Okay, good.
The one that just said, the fire vehicle, the truck.
A gentleman called, how many years?
It just says, it isn't a vehicle, okay.
I know the guy that worked in trailer.
And then working zags.
I said, Arsenal Bank, you got a new truck, Transit Connect Van Airport, that one kind of threw us for a loop here at the last minute, thought I had all my budget numbers in place, and then we found out that we needed to make some April improvements in order to maintain the financing money that we were going to be getting back from the corporate hanger, so we had to make some adjustments there, but we got that in the budget to cover four thousand five hundred. So we keep telling us that we're gonna have to get upgrades of computers, and everybody's just, oh.
Is that the, is that the, we lose something?
Yeah.
Okay. The Transit Connect Van, is that for like?
It's for Mr. Hayden when it cleans, where he can keep all his stuff, all his cleaning supplies.
So you can see hundred and sixty-seven thousand on that screen for a total, total capital improvement project, I'd say that's still a huge number, that one million one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars without going to like borrowing. All right, so our enterprise funds, this is EMS and our retail shopping center across the street, the shopping center, you can see currently right now, we have some, you know, both of the flat, they're not, they just made any changes, no increases, no decreases in revenue being generated, we have Dick and Wiggly, we have Church Review, Jameson's that were actually receiving, we have cash payments on, on monthly basis, the Ozark Health and Fitness is still in the donate, collecting time period because of the donated corner lot over there. Anticipated expenses, hopefully around sixty thousand, and then depreciation expenses, sixty-five, so a total of one twenty-five, and of course, that's what that was there. Then the EMS, having a good year, really a good year, and so based on the projections as far as the revenue being generated there, our total operating expenses, depreciation in the capital outlay purchase that we mentioned, two point six four eight million, and total for the budget for EMS. So then back to the original slide, like I said, we can finally eat our dessert from Ant Hill's, thirty-six million one ninety-eight, three seventy-three in revenue, thirty-six million one ninety-eight, three seventy-three in expenditures, that gets us the balance, but.
Well, Chris, on that previous slide, did you take into consideration transports for EMS?
Yes, sir, we're talking about the two point six million dollars.
Right.
Absolutely, that is, that is charges for services.
Okay, so we're only going to estimate a two point four percent increase with the new transport?
Yes.
Okay.
I won't say that, I mean, I said, we don't know, we don't have the factual data, you know, at this point right now, but in October, we said, this one, October seventh. Yeah, so we will have that painted in, in operation, we'll see where we stand there, or if we have to make them a year. That is my presentation, if there's some other questions?
I'm gonna go for a couple, so.
Sure.
Somebody probably wondered why in the capital, we don't have like the tennis court, I mean, the basketball courts, we were hoping to be able to do it in this time, and that when he was referencing the awful money, we hope we have enough to be able to do that. But also, I was gonna show y'all in the, in the meeting, next meeting, and I'm just taking advantage of this time, we think we figured out where we're gonna put the tank, I hope y'all agree with it, we measured everywhere in the world and tried to figure out DOT wouldn't let us put it where we wanted to, but.
He said dentistry, that's about it.
Yeah, that's about it. So we thought we would try to put it there, at some point, we're gonna need to repaint the helicopter, we gotta redo the tank, we wanted to do this as a large block wall, I've taught Carroll High School's maestery program, they would like to take that on as a project, if we can work it out, and then let Wes paint like a mural type sign that kind of looks like the one on the side of the floor covering building down there, that would have something to do with the tank and the helicopter, we haven't got quite that far, but in doing some of that, and the, we wanted to pave the parking lot out at the, behind the Friends of Army Aviation, we want to try to take some of that money that we got in as revenue that was really unexpected, like from the sale of those Ozark buildings, fly building, and maybe apply some of that towards that. But the biggest thing I wanted to tell you is, y'all know we created ODEC in two thousand and ten, and that was done with us giving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the county giving seventy-five, and then the rest of us by private sector, giving money to them. Well, then, when I was the county commission chairman, we did a lodging tax increase that was legislatively done to, to help fund ODEC projects, and the way that was set up is that money would go to the county commission, it would be held until ODEC requested money for funding for projects and things like that. Well, the reason I came to Billy Blackwell, who was the mayor at the time, and to the Daleville mayor at the time, Ms. Woodward, and asked him to let me do it at the county level, because I could collect on Fort Rucker, Daleville, Ozark, one day when Enterprise builds across in Dale County, or Dothan builds across in Dale County, we'd collect on all of those, so give us a bigger pot of money to do that. So I'm telling y'all that to say, since ODEC's been put in place in two thousand and ten, they've really seen no increase in revenue, well, it's going to get to a point to where, you know, cities and counties, they see it from tax revenue, and from sales tax and from property tax, they're really not seeing that, I don't want us to get in a position where we, as a city and county, have to give more money to it, and of course, the business world does too, I say they have not seen an increase, other than we brought Daleville loan, and Daleville pays eleven thousand dollars a year. But what we have talked about doing, and I was kind of the one that proposed it, is us going to the county and asking them to do a two percent lodging tax increase, nobody locally pays that, we're still be under Dothan and Enterprise, but take that two cent and put it straight to the general fund, ODEC, to keep, keep that process going. Hopefully, the county will do that, we could do it from a city, but we would only collect what's in the city of over, but if we do it through the county process, then, you know, we'll have a bigger, that's probably best I could estimate, about seventy-five thousand a year, which, you know, is a pretty good little shot in the arm for, for moving like ODEC, but I just want to point a few things out, I don't know if the county will do it, but yeah, I think it's a good, it's a good way for us not to have to play more out of our general operating fund in the future, but I think that's all I have.
I have a question, back to the slide with the appropriations on it, it was like a slash mark, somebody else was with it. I lost it way back there, sorry.
That's gonna be in our general fund expenses.
Yeah. So the appropriations, non-departmental?
Yep.
It's taking an increase?
Oh, yeah, because the non-departmental appropriations, I think.
Those are like, our appropriations, I know what those are, that's like a library and OCA, and all that.
Yeah, the appropriations, we're doing that, are very small.
But what's the non-denominational, I mean, non-departmental?
So the biggest increase in non-departmental, that's gonna be in our, what we call our general fund five thirteen, I've been informed by our building official that we're going to have to spend that wide on the elevator here, about a hundred and twenty thousand.
So that part is for, it's not for the appropriations increase, it's for the, what we have to use as the city part, other than the one appropriation increase that we already voted on?
Yes, that's, that's.
And that includes that?
Other than, you know, education, that, that is affected by the sales tax.
Right.
So that one is considered an appropriation, but it has its own separate one, I don't think. As far as appropriations, just the increase to the libraries, all we have, the other, you know, hundred and fifty-six thousand, that's a street department, that's for the whole house.
Right.
Primarily, the increase is from the elevator, estimated about a hundred and twenty thousand will be the upgrades to get, so that's, that's what we're requiring, we don't have choice because we do a different building.
Right, yeah, okay, that's people are doing.
So when you're talking about that, the, but don't we have to do the same thing at the Civic Center? So why isn't that in the budget? If not, or if, or if not, I mean.
Well, parks and recreations reduced too, almost fifty thousand, that's why I didn't have, understand that either.
That one, I mean, the system, yeah, they were, they didn't, the city, they don't, they don't make that anymore, it's outdated, they had to create a whole system, the Seehawke, and one of the systems, I don't know, I think they just, it's just broken down, the chair.
Oh, I thought that what they told us the last time was that they don't make parts for that one anymore?
They don't, obviously, they were to reach out to the Garaventa, the company that makes them, they sent technicians here, they're gonna try to recreate those parts, I'm waiting to hear back from them, if they can recreate it, then it can save thousands of dollars, if not, then it's gonna be a steep bill for us to replace that elevator.
But at the moment, the Civic Center is still accessible.
Accessible, yes.
Because on that front, on that bottom level.
Right.
They just can't get to the top levels.
If you come into the front of the building, you have access to upper level, if you come to the back of the building, you have access to the mid-floor.
So there is access.
Yes.
You just can't, you just can't go up and down, you gotta pick where you wanna be up top, you wanna be down below.
Right, no, I understand.
And the, the differ, the, the less of the budget from last year, what is causing that, the forty-nine, five, six, one?
Yeah, I mean, we're still upgrading our facilities and parks and recreations and trying to get all that under control, I mean, there's a big, that's a big decrease, and we're talking to pay open ever at baseball, or basketball fields, those thousand.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's also, so is it because we don't know the cost of it yet, why we can't just put it in the budget so that whenever that comes down the line, then y'all aren't saying, hey, this is an unbudgeted expense, can we do that? And I mean, same thing with like, even tonight, the, the projectors are on there, like, why can't we just put it in there?
Well, now, the projectors are not in the budget, that's.
Yeah, that's what I'm, so.
Yeah.
Oh, is it because they just weren't able to be in the budget, and so that's why they're coming before us to ask for them?
What part are you talking about?
So what, what I'm saying is.
The video walls.
The, yeah, like, like, we know things like the elevator are gonna have that, right? But then, so we're setting the budget right now, so why don't we incorporate things like if the video projector's gonna be in there, so that y'all aren't having to come to us with.
Well, because it'll be in this year.
You want a video projector in this year?
I want it done like next month.
Do we have some kind of big project that is gonna be the video projector?
Because the folks that's doing the sound and stage is going to do that, and they're gonna have all the equipment in there to mount all that stuff at that same time, so it's actually costing less money to do it now than it would be. When we got the bids, we, we didn't have to get three bids, because this is going through the Alabama Power process, but when we got the bids, they were twenty thousand dollars higher from other companies, that's because they don't know we already got the equipment in there to do all this work, so it costs us a lot more money if we do it later. And, I was gonna explain this to y'all in the next meeting, we got a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in contingency money on this project that we're going to use the money out of the contingency fund, so hopefully, there's not gonna be an increase on any of them. Hundred and eleven on sixty-two.
The contingency fund, what is that, what is that?
When you do these big projects, they just give you a contingency fund that in case you have overruns, well, most of that is from the HVAC system and the lighting, which is the most unknown part of it, so we had like seventy thousand dollars left on that part, and then the other part was on the stage and, and the sound, so when you combine them together, we had a hundred and, it was seventy-nine, three oh seven, and anyway, so a hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we got total in contingency funds, and the screens are forty.
Forty-six.
Six, I believe.
Okay, and then one more question, so we've already been told that our electricity bills for the Civic Center have already come down like in half, so.
Let me know up here. So we did find out that there has been an adjustment made, and so we got a much larger increase in the Civic Center electricity bill this year.
Oh, so it was an accident?
Well, it wasn't an accident, I, we don't know, I mean, it was Alabama Power and Halle posted their, you know, their payments that they requested, and so this time, the, and Halle just told me about it on Monday morning, when she got the summary building, so I haven't seen it yet, but the bill for the Civic Center is extremely higher than it was, and what we're thinking is that maybe they didn't, you know, charge as much during the time that they were doing the work on it, but now with this bill, they're trying to catch back up, and so it's a little bit higher than what it was.
So we don't actually know what the savings is gonna be?
We don't, we don't, well, we know there's gonna be a savings, because obviously, I mean, you know, what we budgeted for and where we're at already, it's a lot less, but we don't know the actual, you know, estimated, and that, that forty-nine thousand, that's pretty much where that came from.
From the electricity save?
The electricity for Civic Center, because it's an apartment recreation, and so that was, that was a huge reduction when we were working the budget, because those were the numbers that we had to work off.
But we're talking about putting in cameras and this kind of thing with that saving, so where would that money come from? Parks and recreations, we've already decreased it?
Y'all approved one point six million dollars to do the improvements to the. Y'all approved one point six million dollars to do the improvements to the civic center.
Right.
So, that's essentially where that money's going.
And where are we, how, where are we at on that? We approved one point six million, how much have we spent?
So, we've got a bill that's coming up, Ozzy, I don't, I haven't seen that, and then what's coming through from you? The one point two million is gonna be the first part, because there was two phases.
I remember that, that number, yeah.
Yeah, there was the one point two, and then the, you know, the sound and space on top there are like a hundred thousand.
Three thirty-nine.
We haven't paid that yet, but it is right here on us, as far as at least the one point two to be paid, and so, we need it.
So, there's no way to, to find the fifty thousand for Parks and Rec? I mean, we still have projects to do. Does that, does that mean we're gonna be doing less this next budget with Parks and Rec?
Absolutely. What are you, what project are you referring to?
Well, I don't know, we still have to do the work at Open Everett, we still have some, we're still applying for grants for Stegall, for Kids Zone area, for all those improvements.
Well, yeah, but if you're applying for a grant, you get the grant, that one's-
The baseball fields at Stegall, they'll be having drainage problems, is that included? You know, just things like that.
You're gonna always have something.
One of the things about the, you're talking about power bill, hopefully, Ozzy's gonna be able to book the civic center for winter.
That's true.
Because power bill's gonna go up, but also, our revenue's gonna go up.
Well, that, yeah, of course.
That's how we're looking at it.
He's got some contacts somewhere.
It's coming out in this budget.
Okay, that's all, I was just, I just, I just, I don't like to see that in Parks and Rec, because they work so hard to, you know.
That would be in this year, and I think that's gonna be somewhere in the fifty to seventy
Alright, does anybody have, Councilmembers D, does anybody else have any questions for first of the budget?
That airport maintenance and rehab grant that we are approving tonight, the airport maintenance and rehab grant that we are approving tonight.
Come on, let them in.
It will come up in twenty-five.
Yes, that's that, that forty-one file that I showed you, that's what that is.
In that budget, right.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, corporate heads.
Thank you.
This is your Super Bowl.